The meeting of September 6, 2023, District Board meeting come to what? A clerk, please read the roll.
DeVella.
Here.
Adel.
Here.
Anderson. Abadision.
Here.
Bazano.
I'm a little off style.
Buell.
Here.
Spatter. Social media. And all those stories that he wanted. Next story, it was all about people who.
If someone in the, someone in the tanning remotely could quiet the background noise, sounds like we can hear a TV. Bush. Curry.
Here.
DeSaro.
Here.
Drake.
Here.
Gail. Cardo.
Here.
Gentile.
Here.
Healy. Hoffman.
Here.
O'Hanlon.
Here.
Holloway.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lechance. Lester.
Here.
Lewis. Magnin. Mandite.
Here.
Manscalco. Hayne.
Here.
Tell.
Here.
Toski. Slemy.
Here.
Stuber.
Here.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Here.
Carrier. We have a corral.
Stand for the. To the flag of the United States of America, this republic, which stands one nation, without division, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Approval of the minutes of August the 7th, 2023 is a motion. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Item five. Public comments relative to agenda items. Public comments relative to agenda items.
Yes, I have some comments.
Okay.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Am I on?
You are.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Good evening. My name is Alma Elder, and I'm a member of a group called Third Act. Third Act is comprised of senior citizens who wish to support engaged flooding by stormwater. So we are in support of MDC. In viewing the last meeting, the MDC outreach team deserve much credit for its excellent presentation on assistance to citizens communication with minority businesses, minority homeowners, elderly homeowners, technical schools, public meetings, and public cars. However, as a newcomer on Zoom, there was some difficulty in following the conversation. People participating from home cannot see the name placards. Could the speakers identify themselves by name and job position, please? In tonight's meeting, I am seeking specific information about progress on Durham Street and the South Hartford Conveyance and Storage Tunnel. For Durham Street, I request details such as number of houses completed, lateral lines installed, repairs, number of pumps, and backwater valves. In other words, we are seeking not aspirational data so much as actual data on what has been done. And for the South Hartford Conveyance and Storage Tunnel, we would like to have the expected completion date for that tunnel. Thank you for your time.
Were there comment, public comment? Not. Report from the chairman. No report, report from the chief executive officer.
Yes, thank you. I only have a few items. And as I've mentioned before, we meet with our outreach teams and our construction and engineering teams every Wednesday, and we spend about up to upwards of three hours talking about the program. We're not building projects, we're building a program in North Hartford, $180 million program. And I reiterate in these meetings, we spend two hours talking about communication, not about construction. It's not about construction, right? Everybody knows how to build stuff. It's about how we communicate. So just to answer the question, since I'm already here, the tunnel will be completed in January of this coming year. And we do a two-week look ahead, which was posted and is posted on our website. And as part of those meetings, I've asked Nick Solemy to, to fine tune our, our website. And I actually asked him today, I'm sorry, I asked him last week, but he's going to present in, now, he's going to present, just walk through the website to show everyone how we've set this up. And I think he's done a great job, really focused on the specifics. Durham Street, as I've reported before, had the, we had to replace the water main first. There's 26 homes on Durham Street. We're, three of the homes we have not been able to get into, one of them's abandoned, and two of them we haven't been able to get into. So we're working with our outreach teams, Crane and Janice, to help us get into those two homes. So, and then the sewer work will follow on to that, and then moving on to Woodstock. Woodstock Street, but it is on our website, but Nick, now's a good time for you to do your little presentation, just to show everybody where this information is on our website.
Excellent.
We had a lot of input from commissioners and from Ms. Judy Allen. It was cumbersome to get through and to see the product, so go ahead, Nick.
Important that time, Nick Solemy, MDC Communications, important thing is to get every, get it someplace easy to find. So the first thing you see when you turn on the website, it kind of cascades three separate little links you can go on, but the first thing is North Hartford Sewer Proof and Project.
Excuse me, Nick, could you get the microphone?
Yep, sorry. The first thing you see when you look at the website is a link to this section. However, there's several other ways to get to it right here. There's a resources link at the top of the page, there's a big drop down there, just another way, so it's not just one way. So just so you know where you are, it's a map of all of the projects that are planned for North Hartford, the separation work, the rehabilitation work. It's, this is, you know, it's a little hard to see on the screen like this. However, you gotta, this, this, it's gotta start somewhere. So this is the project area, it kind of walks you through a short narrative, how we got to where we are. This is easier for folks at home, like the woman from the public who already spoke, they want to see the project area, they can download a high-resolution version of the maps, they're not just looking at a photo on the website. We then took the projects and broke them down by what type of projects they are. First, the sewer separation, I believe she mentioned Durham Street in her opening comments, so right here, Durham Street, we broke it down that way, there's the three separation projects. And we kind of, Scott asked to kind of put the, where we are this week and the come, and the next, the two weeks, really, what kind of work's going to be happening. Put that right here on the main page, you can see what's coming for the week of the 4th. You can see the water main work, it's mostly complete, the actual main, they have to go house to house, do the services. This actual sewer separation work itself starts, I'm going to say mid-September. But just to drill down a little more, so this is just easy, you can see where the projects are, what's coming for that week. To get more specific information on a project, we created like a standalone page for each one. This lists the number of properties, who the contractor is, the overall general schedule, similar, what just happened, what's going to be happening. We also like to document what outreach we've done. So if we did a flyer, we did, not only did we just hand it out to everybody, but we put it here for people to access. Things, the outreach meeting itself, to the actual construction notices available. For this project, which started in mid-July, there's actually some pretty good construction photos, you can see folks out there. And there's a little kind of a carousel to go through. We'll be able to do this for all projects as it becomes, we have more robust content to put out there. This is just an example of kind of the first project that we did, how we're breaking down from folk, the way folks can access the information.
And Scott Chelsa, I'm his chairman, Scott Chelsa, CEO. So these, obviously, the first project we're doing in the area is, is Durham Street. We're also doing lining work on Tower. There's not a lot to see on lining work, because it's, you know, it's, it's non-destructive in the road. But, but very important point, and this is, this is a lot of credit to the, to the men and women at the MDC, is we promised to be out there in construction in July, and we are. And we promised, and we, to achieve a goal that we've never had before, which is similar to the city of Hartford's goal, which is to meet 30% Hartford resident workforce, and we are achieving that. So credit to all of our staff that's, that's, that's been involved in making that happen. It's a great credit to, to the MDC staff, so thank you.
Scott, I'll just add, just because you said it, I just clicked over to the, the first lining project that you mentioned, the Tower Avenue. So while he's right, it's not an open cut, you're not going to see a lot of construction, it's, you know, lining is, it just doesn't involve that kind of technology. There's, you can see that it's a pretty big project area. This is like Tower Avenue kind of runs along right here, you know, the neighborhood's built off it, so.
And if you want to leave that, the map, so, so here's something that's very important that we need, and we're educating the, the community with our outreach teams and our staff. We've always, we've been lining pipe all throughout Hartford for a long time, right? And when you line a pipe, the material is such that you're heating that styrene up, basically hard plastic, you're heating it up, there's a smell that comes through the, the lateral into the home. There is some circumstances when we're, when we're cleaning the sewer system, you have to clean the pipe before you line it. There's a circumstance that happened in Bloomfield the other day, where we call it a burp toilet, the, the elevation of the toilet is so, such that water seeps to some level, and it's low enough where the pressure of the hose in the pipe could cause water to come out of the toilet. So, so those are the kinds of things. Now we're doing something we've never done before. Not only we lining the lateral, I'm sorry, not only we lining the main sewer pipe, we're also lining the lateral. So we have to be very, again, it's a communication thing to make sure people understand what that smell is, and make sure that they understand it's, it's safe, it's not going to hurt them. We have documentation from, from OSHA and from our, our technical staff that we're going to be providing to customers when we start to do that lining. But it's a, it's a communication piece to make sure that everybody understands that this is a safe product, and it's not going to be harmful to anyone. So we, that's going to be a big effort on our part, because we've never lined laterals before. We've done pilots, Jason Waterbury has done a lot of pilots in West Hartford and, and Weatherfield, and, and that's in part how we got deep. Those pilot programs that we did back in 2008 to 2013, that's how we got deep to agree with that, with that technical data, the results of removing stormwater from leaking into the lateral. That's how we got deep to agree that, that this is a successful, successful process, and that's why they're giving us 50% grant for the lateral work, because of that pilot work we did back in the day. So we're going to keep, you know, our communications up and make sure that everybody understands, you might smell something, it's okay. And again, when you're lining the main sewer and you're lining lateral, most of our catch basins are 300 feet apart, so you might have five, six, seven homes on each side of the road. We, you know, there's a, there's a process, and obviously that it takes, could take up to 16, 18 hours for that pipe to cure. So in most cases, a home has enough capacity in their pipe to the street that they're not going to be without their sewer system, but we, we make sure that they're aware of that. And we try to get them to try to not use washing machines, you know, dishwashing, those kind of things, to, to reserve the capacity of the existing system and serving the home. So this is all good stuff, and this is, is a great way to remove stormwater from the system, not have to dig up the street, and not have to, and then in turn, not have to build bigger pipes downstream from these areas. That's, that's the whole goal of it. What else you got, Nick?
About it, I will just say we have a pretty good FAQ on what you're talking about right now, about the lining. I'll just click to that real quick, because you mentioned it, what's that, or is it safe process, so that stuff? We have some of that stuff ready to go.
We also have advertised this information in three papers, local papers?
Backwater valve program has been advertised in Hartford, like, weeklys.
Yeah, so there's three papers that we've been recommended to put that, those ads in. So we've done that. Another, we are working, I mentioned this at the last Community Affairs meeting, I think, was, was that we are working on securing a location in North Hartford for an MDC office, Community Outreach Office, which our community outreach teams will be working out of, making those schedules. We're also going to be working with the community centers and looking to set up space within those community centers. We're going to be having monitors that run our, you've seen, we have 13 of them, I think, cartoons, one-minute cartoons, that talk about the MDC, and explains a lot of different components of what we're doing. Those will run continuously, there'll be schedules, people can sign up for, for appointments. Something that is, are you done, Nick?
I'm done.
Good. So one thing that's really, really important, and we're going to struggle with this, I know Commissioner Torres talked about this, we've been talking about this internally. This new flood, this new flood commission program that's, that's been set up by the legislation, the Comptroller's Office, we may, we need to make it very clear the communication roles, roles and responsibilities. So the MDC is not involved in managing this program at all. There's an eight-page application that has to be filled out, and it's sent to the Comptroller's Office, it started on September 1st. What we are doing is, I've shown this before, this is the, this is the information provided by the Comptroller's Office, and we're handing it out. So whenever we go out to a home, we provide this information, there's clear direction on, on how you apply for the program, it's a $5 million program. So it is, is not an MDC program, it's a Comptroller program. The only thing that we're involved in by, by, by statute, by legislation, is that we have to provide an inspector that will be able to determine cause, and is there, was there actually a flood? And is this home, has it been affected by flood damage? The Comptroller's Office decided that they wanted to allow the homeowner to hire their own inspector, which is fine, and we are mandated, we'll be reimbursed, we are mandated to have an inspector. We don't have someone with that skill set, that's more of a building official skill set. So we've asked our outreach teams, Janice and Crane, Crane working for Housing. Habitat, thank you, Habitat for Humanity, she had a lot of insight to this, and we identified five individuals. Jeff King was involved in helping identify, again, we're trying to build capacity, so we found people that are qualified but aren't certified by Department of Consumer Protection, so we're helping them get certified. We have two individuals that are from Hartford, so we're going to be interviewing those individuals and basically going, entering to POs with those individuals. We don't know how many we're going to need, we don't know if a homeowner's going to want to use their own, but in any case, the, the Comptroller's Office are going to require the same mandates. We have created, are in the process of creating a checklist for all of the inspectors. So whether it's our inspector, MDC, or it's the homeowner's inspector, they will have to utilize an international checklist form, that's, that's the Association of Home Inspectors under the National Building Code. They, we will use that form as, and everyone will use the same form, and we'll fill that out, and, and that way, ourselves, or the, the homeowner does, does the inspection, everybody's providing the same information and uniformly. And so once we do our inspection and determine, yes, this property was damaged by flood, we send in our report to the Comptroller's Office, and it's in their hands, and Dr. Rule will decide who's been hired by the Comptroller, will decide, is it a valid claim? And the amount of the claim will be determined by the state of Connecticut, Comptroller's Office has also RFP for an adjuster. I don't know who they've hired, but it will be someone like Aetna or Travelers, they will determine cost. And then Dr. Rule will rule on that. But we, we're, we're very conscious, there's a lot of confusion, we had our outreach teams, Janice was out in Lime Street Friday. An individual was having problems and didn't understand the process, and we're trying to help them understand the process. So we'll do everything we can to educate the public and make sure that they, they're heading in the right direction. But they, we were told this morning, Kelly is our point of contact with the Comptroller's Office, we were told there, they do have 17 applications that have been submitted. So, and it's a, from, what they have told us is it's approximately 30 days for the Comptroller to decide and take action on that application. So we just want to make sure, we keep reiterating this in all of our meetings, our outreach meetings, that what MDC's specific role is here, and hopefully, we can support Blue Hill Civic in their efforts to, to, to educate the public on the program. So that's all I have.
I know. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Solemy?
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, at the beginning of your presentation, you said that the tunnel will be completed in January, you mean January 24th?
Correct.
So when you say completed, does it mean it's going to be operational, or you mean the, but just the tunnel part of it?
Yeah, the tunnel will be, I mean, the tunnel in a sense, is a sense completed, right? But, but the, the contractor has, you know, punchless items to do, and so he will be done, they will be done in January. We still have to build a pump station. The pump station is not operational until a pump station is operational, and that is, what's the date, Susan, for?
It's the contract date is March of '26.
'26.
'26.
So that's Nickerson's contract, it's $117 million project. Until that's built and operational, the tunnel will, you know, obviously not be, and that's all part of our consent order and consent decree.
Question, but the contract for, I forgot what number, number five, the one for the pump station?
That's three.
Three, I'm sorry. That's been left, but we.
Oh yeah, we, they're working, yes.
So it's actually underway?
Oh yes, absolutely.
But it's going to take a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Further questions? Not, thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Item number eight, report from the District Council, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Stone, District Council. Just a couple of things, piggybacking on what Scott was talking about, with the, the flood damage program. And you may have said it, Scott, if you did, I apologize, but I want to make it clear that any cost districts, district occurs for these inspectors to verify flood damage, or damage caused by flooding, is reimbursed directly by the state dollar per dollar, so it's, it's no cost to the MDC. As to, and I just want to talk about one very important matter, that is the tunnel litigation slash mediation. We are continuing in federal court, not only defending the claim brought by KOJV, but prosecuting our counterclaim for various items of damages that we've incurred as a result of their, what we consider to be, in some sense, bad workmanship, and in other sense, delayed work, delayed completion of the project. So we're pursuing that, we're finalizing our counterclaim, it should be filed next week. All of, we meet, I won't say daily, but almost certainly every other day on this matter, and it'll be more daily as we approach the mediation sessions. Those are scheduled for, scheduled for October 4th and 5th. There's a session, independent of the joint mediation conference, there's a session on October 3rd with the MDC people and the mediator separately. The other side will have that opportunity the week prior. In addition to your in-house staff that's been working on this claim, we have, as you know, outside counsel, Tim Corey with Inkley Allen, who's an expert in construction and litigation, and Dave Hill from Ford Plakis, whose expertise is federal litigation, they're assisting us. We also have our contract administrator and design professionals, Aecom is the designer, Jacobs has the contract administrator, who are assisting us. And then finally, we've secured some well-known renowned experts to assist us on various aspects of the claim, I'll just go through quickly each of them. Dr. Gary Briarly is a world-renowned geotechnical engineer, authored many treatises, treatises on tunneling and mining and differing site conditions. He's one of our primary experts. Levant Ozemir is a renowned expert in consulting on tunneling as well, particularly TBM specifications and differing site condition claims. We also have Marcus Tuze, he's with, he's from Germany, but he's an expert on what we consider to be self-inflicted damages caused by KOJV, creating the failures that resulted in our counterclaim, so he's going to be assisting us on that. And then finally, we have Neil Guardian, he's an expert on tunnel scheduling, and his expertise is not only looking at the details of the claim in terms of cost, but also justifying our liquidated damage claims as well. So we've got a very good team, and a real support team, we, you have is your in-house engineers and professionals who have been doing and will continue to do Yoma's work in defending the claim and prosecuting our claim. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will answer any questions anyone might have.
Are there any questions for the General Counsel? No questions. Scott's one.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners.
Item nine, Bureau of Public Works, consideration of potential action regarding, A, are we going to take these into the vision? A, acceptance of sewer bill by developer permit agreement, Anna Grace School, 129 Griffin Road, North Bloomfield, Connecticut. Is there a motion to receive the report and adopt the resolution? Second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was taken up at the Public Works meeting and was put on unanimously to move it to the board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there questions? Not? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item, item B, discussion regarding independent council report, is this? Item B, Shellborne Axle LLC requests to modify supplemental assessment on 50 Morgan Street, Hartford. Is there a motion to? Except, it's been moved and seconded, Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this item was discussed and resolved. Any, any problems at our meeting of Public Works, most recent meeting of Public Works? And that item was also pushed forward to be taken up. For unanimous approval.
Are there questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10, Board of Finance, consideration of potential action regarding, A, Authorization for Project Grant Agreement, CWF 747-BG. Is there a motion to adopt?
Oh, we'll move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and seconded, Commissioner Solemy?
Yes, this item was the Board, the Board of Finance, reading this evening, passing the end of this.
Are there questions? If not, all is in favor of item A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, Authorization for interim funding obligations and/or project loan agreements, CWF 746-C. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Okay.
It's been seconded. Commissioner Solemy? Commissioner Salim?
This item was brought to the Board of Finance at our meeting this evening and resolution passed unanimously.
Are there questions? If not, all those in favor of item B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, Authorization for Amendment to Interim Funding Obligation and/or Project Loan Agreement, CWF 719C. Is there a motion to adopt?
No movement.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Commissioner Salim?
Item came before the Board of Finance at our meeting earlier this evening and resolution passed unanimously.
Questions? Are there questions from the commission? If not, all those in favor of item number C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 11, Personnel Pension Insurance Committee referral regarding removal of Commissioner's comments and questions agenda, on agenda items. I'm going to ask for a motion to refer this to the Government Committee for evaluation and then back to the Board if that's the decision of the committee.
No movement.
It's a motion to refer. It's a discussion. If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 12, Consideration of Potential Action Regarding Settlement of Pending Litigation, Cardona versus MDC. Counselor, is there an executive session on this, or is it to be taken up in the general session?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Kristone District Council. I spoke with John Myrtle earlier today, and so long as we can keep any, what am I, what am I considering issues relating to liability off the table, we can stay in full session. To the extent, and it's fine, we can do it, to the extent anybody wants to talk about liability or lack thereof on the part of the MDC or the town of West Hartford, who's our co-defendant in the case, we should go into executive session. Frankly, this has to be approved not only by, or considered and approved by this board, but also the town of West Hartford, and I don't want to prejudice any action they may take.
So are you?
So with that, John, you can start, John, and then if it gets close to executive session material, I'll interrupt.
Thank you, Chris. This is John Myrtle, says District Counsel. This lawsuit relates to an individual that was driving a moped on New Park Avenue. The MDC had had a water main break on New Park Avenue and had conducted a repair and put down a temporary patch. The patch became depressed and allegedly, and the individual driving the moped hit a hole somewhere in the road and fell from the moped. He had about $37,000 in medical expenses, cranial fracture, injuries to his neck and shoulder, and a hemorrhage in his brain. The original demand for the lawsuit was $236,000. What we're requesting for approval is a total settlement, the MDC payment of $14,000, and the town of West Hartford is offered to pay $6,000. So the plaintiff would receive $20,000. The $14,000 that we are recommending for settlement is effectively the cost to conduct the trial. So it's an efficient settlement to resolve the case. If there's any questions that we have to answer.
Are there any questions?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just add one comment to that. Thank you, John, for that presentation. The Kristone District Council, you might look at those numbers and say, you know, obviously there's a large discrepancy between what was demanded and what they're willing to accept for settlement. And there are liability issues. This is a case that's brought under the Effective Highway Statute, which is a statute that's very restricted in terms of being able to recover. You have to show that not only that a municipality in this case, the MDC or West Hartford, were negligent, but also that there's absolutely no contributory negligence. If the jury came back, at 99%, it was the town's fault, and 1% was the fault of the operator of the moped, the recovery would be zero. So when you look at these numbers, that, in effect, is one of the main reasons why, after a pre-trial before a judge, why this is what is offered to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If not, a motion. Is there a motion to accept the settlement as stated on the agenda?
No movement.
Moved and seconded. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opportunity for general public comment, number 13. Is there any public comment from the listeners in the website, on the WebEx? If not, Commissioners request for future agenda items. Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner Guardo. I'd like to thank the MDC for providing the, this new technology. I was able to watch some, there's nothing on TV this weekend, so I watched some YouTube videos of technology meeting that I missed, and also PP&amp;I meeting. And PP&amp;I meeting was interesting, and discussion came about E2K, and I'm just wondering if that's going to be on a future agenda item.
Counselor?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, Kristone District Council, a redraft has been prepared, it's been sent to Chair of the Government Committee, and you should hear back in short order. They'll have a meeting on it. It does not have to go to a public hearing, but they'll have a meeting on it, and so you should see it. Probably a December, October meeting.
And there has to be a public hearing in this, right, Counselor?
Well, it's a bylaw, so, no.
It's a bylaw.
It's not a bylaw.
If I can follow up on that, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Commissioner Guardo here. I noticed that when I was watching a meeting live on the WebEx, you can turn on the closed caption, and it's incredible. I've watched a little bit of the meeting earlier today, and I'm just wondering if, when it's played back on the YouTube, if the closed captioning can be included in that as part of the recording. But it's quite impressive the way that it takes people's names and gets them right sometimes. But it's, that's AI.
We'll look into making that happen, absolutely.
Further questions? If not, the appropriate motion of adjournment is in order? Without objection, we stand, Chairman.